So you could. Okay. Hang on one second, I just got something popping up on my.
Okay, say that again, please.
I said, um, the board took jurisdiction of both cases at your meeting in May, and you actually began the hearing on forty-four Wheat Shift Lane. So you can pick up now where you left off. I'm not sure where their attorney is, though. Is he in participants?
Maybe, maybe just for the, for clarity, maybe we can just, I don't think we were that far into it, right?
Oh, you, you weren't. I believe, I'm just looking at my notes. You heard testimony from Tom O'Shea, their engineer. There were some exhibits. And then I believe, wait, I take that back. Not Tom O'Shea, I'm wrong. You heard testimony from Dave Schmidt, their engineer. Their was an exhibit, and then you began to hear planning testimony from John McDonough. So I guess applicant's attorney, if you'd like them to recap. Where they are.
Maybe just a brief recap before we, yeah, from the, I assume there, the applicant's attorney and other participants are here?
Well, that's what I was wondering. Are they in participants? That would be Richard Shatsman?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if he's.
Is he here?
I don't believe so.
Ah. Okay.
What about any of the, what about the applicant or?
The applicant is here, the engineer for the applicant is here, the architect for the applicant is here.
Tell me the name again for the attorney?
Uh, Richard Shatsman.
Richard, right?
Yes, Richard.
I don't know if he's with David Schmidt, who's the engineer. They shared the screen last time, so.
Well, maybe we should.
Oh. Alex Doherty, Alex Doherty is the planner. He's covering for Mr. McDonough.
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is, um, is Mr. Shatsman out there somewhere?
I just promoted David Schmidt that way to the panelists.
He's muted.
Right.
Uh, David, if you can hear us, can you unmute yourself and?
Jim, since we're getting started with the hearing, do you want to indicate?
There we go, there's Mr. Shatsman.
That you're going to recuse yourself, Jim?
Okay, so there's David and, and, uh, Mr. Shatsman.
All right, and, um, Mr. Davage is going to recuse himself from the application.
For the, for the Hun School.
For the Hun School, absolutely, just the Hun's, yes, from the, I, I apologize, you're right.
Okay, well, what we, just, just for the record, we're now hearing forty-four Wheat Shift Lane.
Yep.
Yes, that's correct.
Block seventy-six oh-one, lot twenty-three in the R-five zone.
Yeah, I got ahead of myself, I'm sorry.
Okay. Mr. Shatsman, do you want to just sort of give a, a brief opening and then we'll just continue on?
Sure. Uh, Richard Johnson, attorney, from David Schmidt, who gave you an overview, is here to answer questions.
Can you turn your volume up a little bit or get a little close to your microphone?
All right. David Schmidt was here, he testified as to, uh, he testified to, uh, all the, uh, engineering, to the extent there is engineering, also an overview. And then, uh, the planner, John, testified as to, uh, the reasons, described the variances, the reasons for C-one and C-two, the hardship and the expandable C-two. And, uh, he gave, uh, testimony as to his findings and also why it's not a substantial detriment to his own plan and master plan. And, uh, and so now, he, he was finished, uh, but we have Alex Doherty, who's subbing for him, if you recall. Mr. McDonough, the planner, could not be here at the meeting, uh, he had another meeting in another town. I'll qualify, uh, when, uh, Mr. Doherty, uh, testifies as to summation of, of the planning, just going to the planning at the end. And I'll, I'll qualify him as to what he did, uh, in order to get acquainted with this application. So the, the, uh, testimony now will be from Mr. Finelli, the architect. And then, uh, we will have, uh, Mr. Doherty, uh, give a, uh, a recap of some of the planning testimony that we think is important. Mr. Scorpion, the applicant, will just testify as to the fact that he, he, he contacted the, uh, neighbor across the street, uh, or in back of him, and, you know, they won't sell many land to the extent that, uh, that's relevant, this, and then summation, and that'll be the end of it, we'll hear from the public. So, without further ado, I'll hear from Mr. Finelli, please, to see here. Ralph?
Oh.
Uh, Ralph is waiting to get pumped in. I just, I just, that's for the dark, is he outside?
I just.
He's there now, he's muted.
Okay, he's coming.
I'm here. All right, thank you.
All right, Ralph Finelli. Good morning, I'm just basically.
Mr. Finelli, you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Finelli, you want to give us your background for the board's certification?
Sure, I have a bachelor's degree in architecture from the New Jersey Institute of Technology in nineteen eighty-one. I've been licensed since nineteen eighty-four and in private practice since nineteen eighty-seven. I've appeared before dozens of boards throughout New Jersey, as well as Pennsylvania and New York. I've appeared before this board a number of times, most recently, I believe, uh, two thousand and fifteen.
I think we're, I think we'll accept you as an expert. Thank you.
Mr. Finelli, uh, you've prepared the plans, or the plans were prepared for the applicant under your direction?
Yes, they were.
And you're familiar with the zoning ordinance of Princeton?
Excuse me a minute, David, we can't hear you at all. Can you speak closer to the mic?
Okay. You're, okay, so you're, uh, you're familiar with the National Land Use Law and the zoning ordinance of Princeton, right?
I am, yes.
Do you want to go over the, uh, do you want to go over the, uh, elevations and the floor plan to give the board an idea what the house looks like if they approve it?
Sure, so can I share my screen, or did you guys want to, want to do that?
I think you can do that.
Can share, okay. All right, does everybody have that in front of them?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So the, the drawings that are in front of you this evening are exactly the same drawings that you have submitted. They're, they have not been rendered or, uh, or retouched in any way. This is the same set of drawings that's been on file. And I'll run briefly through the plans. I'm really going to start with the second page, which is the floor plan. I'll run through them briefly, and then we can sort of recap and field any questions. As I'm sure you recall from Mr. Schmidt's testimony, the, the footprint of the existing building is very much the same as the proposed footprint of this building. The building's long dimension is parallel to the road. The current building is a one-story. Stylistically, I think we would all agree, it's a contemporary, sort of a pretty authentic nineteen fifties, early sixties contemporary structure. Flat roof, simple rectangular windows. The, the width of the building, I think, was intended to take advantage of the view of the creek in the back. You know, we really looked at the property the first time in the building. We agreed that that was really a nice, uh, a nice sort of planning, uh, starting point for the building, and we proposed really to do the same. So our first floor, as you can see here, is, you know, wider than it is deep. Uh, all of the living spaces across the back of the home, great room, den. You can see, hopefully you can see lots of glass along these elevations facing the creek. Kitchen is sort of in the front on the right side. We've got some utility spaces, a little bit of storage, and our stair to the second floor. Uh, this area out in front that you see is carport, labeled, and then really just covered entry space. On the second floor of the space, and, you know, as you know, with Princeton's setback requirements, we're not just a dimensional setback, but we have a height-to-setback ratio. And again, as we're all used to this now, you know, the height-to-setback ratio, uh, all over is really intended to provide adequate light and air, uh, to all the homes in, in the neighborhood. And in our case, uh, the homes to both of our sides, both left and right, obviously predate the zoning and, and they are a little more traditional in terms of footprint, so a house to our left is a pretty traditional Cape Cod, uh, nice house, about the same scale as ours. But its highest peak of the roof is closer to our property line. Property on the other side, uh, a little more, a, a little more contemporary, it's been added on to a couple of times. But again, their side elevation is pretty tall part of the building. So, uh, even without those, you know, the burden of providing this ratio and light and air is really on us and, and with our neighbors really unable to and predating the zoning. Uh, what we decided to do with the footprint was really take that, take that building shape and spin it so that the second floor now really runs front to back rather than side to side, so that the flanking ends of this building, the left and right, are really just one-story, uh, one-story parts of the building. So, so we'll look at the elevations in a second, uh, but that's really the explanation of why the building sort of, uh, wide on the first floor and narrow and deep on the second floor. It's in response to the height-to-setback ratio. So I'm going to go up to the first, to the first page now, which is the elevations. Sometimes it's hard to see depth, you know, here, you know, you look at the, the front elevation here in the lower left, and you can see the width of the building. So there is our first story. But really, this surface is set back quite a bit from, uh, the, the two-story portion. Uh, the carport is really, uh, really just a frame. You can see really just narrow posts, wide open space back to the entrance of the storage. And then our two-story portion of the building, uh, in the center, in the center of the lot, in the center of the mass. Uh, as I said, we like the, uh, sort of the positioning of the building and the way the building sat on the property, but one of the things we did when we redesigned this was to center the building, uh, on the property, so we did sort of split the difference. We've enhanced the, the dimensional side yard setback on, on both sides. And it was testified last time by both Mr. Schmidt and Mr. McDonough that the side yard setbacks were approximately nine feet on the left and about four feet on the right. We have set this building in the middle so that we have twelve feet of, of clear dimension on both the left and the right. So we've enhanced the side yard setbacks dimensionally by, by quite a bit. So that's our front elevation. We anticipate, uh, mixing, uh, materials between stucco and hardy board. Again, we, we are, uh, we have, uh, continued that contemporary tradition. There's no attics or gables or wasted space above this building. So besides the dimensional constraints, uh, you know, we've made just design efforts to visually reduce the height of the building, uh, by abandoning ideas like attics and things like that. The rear elevation, upper left corner of your drawing, and again, you saw on the plan that, you know, quite a lot of glass across the whole facade, take advantage of the, of the creek way in the back and the green space, uh, between this building and, and the next structure is probably, uh, Mr. Schmidt could probably tell us exactly, but, you know, probably a good four to five hundred feet away, and we've got nothing but green space in between. So we've got the glass to take advantage of that. Up on the second floor, that's, happens to be the master bedroom, also sort of gets the prime view of all the greenery behind us. On the, uh, side elevations, uh, the right side, uh, as you can see, you know, very little windows where the building is closest to the neighbor, up on the second floor. Just remember that this is set back quite a bit more than, than this part of the building. You know, we get back here, and this is an extension of the great room, the family room, so we have doors enabling us to walk out onto the lawn and, and a little bit more window. On the left side, again, very few windows on the bulk of this first floor elevation, closest to where our neighbor might be. Few windows toward the back, happens to be in, in the den area. Again, that mix of, of stucco and hardy board siding. Again, flat roof to, uh, to really reduce the visual, uh, impact and, and mass of the building. Uh, I'm going to scroll down to, uh, the third page, which is not really a requirement of your submission, but, uh, a- as you know, the, in the zoning ordinance, besides the bulk requirements, uh, your land use ordinance is a, is a very sophisticated interpretation of floor area ratio. So, uh, and Mr. Bridger is more than accommodating as we try and work these things out and interpret them, so, you know, so we have a, a maximum floor area ratio. We use, uh, really just about all of it, to be honest with you, but the thing that's a little bit misleading when you look at this plan is, everything you see in blue is living area. So what we would all, in our own homes, refer to as living area. And what you see in green, I think, are the interesting or the curious parts of the floor area ratio calculation. So just as an example, a carport or a garage or a covered walkway, they count toward, uh, floor area. So it's a little misleading when we look at the number of, you know, thirty-three odd hundred square feet of space. The actual living area in the building is, uh, twenty-seven hundred and sixty-eight square feet. And I, I don't, I don't know if that's necessarily germane, but, uh, as we look up and down the street, and we heard testimony from Mr. McDonough last week or last month, uh, the, the size of the house is commensurate with, uh, really all of the homes in the area. It's a nice mix of homes all about the same size, about the same scale. And, uh, and so those calculations are, they're part of the record, and obviously we submitted it, but it's really just to explain, uh, some of the numbers can, can seem a little misleading sometimes. Uh, the last page in this set illustrates the floor area, excuse me, illustrates the height-to-setback ratio. And I'm going to blow that up a little bit, just so we can focus on, uh, on what those numbers mean and, and how they're derived, so some of the simple ones to show, uh, where there, where there really is no issue, is the, uh, the side elevation, so you can see what we, now, what I always do as an exercise is to, is to plot this floor area ratio from the finished floor of the house. So to me, it's, it's an exercise, it, it might be a little bit, you know, just academic, but it's an exercise to just see the house itself fitting within that pyramid-shaped silhouette that we're allowed to design within. So this blue line that you see here represents the first floor of the house. Uh, your ordinance requires a one-to-one ratio, and so that's that forty-five degree line that you see there. And the right side of the house, so this is, this is the back property line. There is that forty-five degree angle. Front property line, there is the forty-five degree angle. And then accurately is, uh, again, reviewing this with Mr. Bridger, these setback ratios are required, uh, to be taken from, uh, the actual, uh, grade, uh, at our property line. So you can see this, if I blow it up, you can read it here on the screen. Uh, and this refers back to the grading, uh, topographic and grading plan that Mr. Schmidt introduced last time. At the front property line at Wheat Sheet, the actual grade is, uh, is, is one hundred. And you can see our first floor elevation is one oh one point five three. These numbers are all on Mr. Schmidt's drawing as well. So I'm taking my one-to-one ratio from, from that grade line at the front. And again, uh, obviously you can see the, uh, you can see on the side elevations, there's no real, no real issue there. Both side elevations. So on the, where, where the, uh, advertised variance comes in is on the front elevation and on the rear elevation. So what we've done on the front elevation is the same exercise, really. You can see the blue line, which represents the first floor. The, there is that ratio, uh, based on the first floor, and that's sort of that, uh, exercise that we always, that I always do to start things off. And then we've taken the side, the grade at the lowest point on the side property line, at both sides, so that the very lowest point along the right side of the property, the topography is at ninety-eight feet. And the very lowest point on the left side, the topography is also at ninety-eight feet. So using that height-to-setback ratio, you can see the green dotted line shows us the one-to-one, and then you can see the heavier black line shows us the, what the existing, what the proposed would be, uh, building, the, uh, building, the building as designed. So from the left side, that is our one and a half to one ratio. On the right side, that's the, the one point four one to one ratio. So again, that just illustrates where we are relative just to the first floor and where we are relative to the, to the worst-case scenario of the, of the topography. Along the rear elevation, uh, you know, I, I, obviously, we, you know, you're just kind of walking out of the back of the property and you're looking toward Wheat Sheet, and you see the same topographic information, our lowest point along that property line, ninety-six, our lowest point along the other property line, ninety-five. And that prescribes those setback ratios based on the, based on the, uh, the topography. So, uh, as I said, our, our dimensional setbacks, uh, the existing, pre-existing, were, were, uh, nine and four, we have increased those to, uh, twelve and twelve. Our overall building footprint is approximately only forty square feet more building footprint than the existing house. Our ratio that, uh, we just described here on the height-to-setback ratio, talked about the size of the house relative to, uh, the neighborhood. And I think one last thing, and I'll just go back to on the floor plan and touch on again, uh, because it is another, uh, variance item, is, uh, is our carport. So, uh, the relatively recent, uh, revision of the land use ordinance or dimensional requirements for, uh, for the carport distance from the building. Uh, in this case, we have, I think functionally about the smallest space that we would really call carport. It's eighteen feet, and, you know, most mid-sized cars are about seventeen. You know, we're, you know, we have really not designed, uh, an attached real garage in quite some time, less than about twenty-two or twenty-three. So this is really, uh, functionally as, uh, a- as small as a space could be. Uh, as you recall from the elevations, it is really just a frame. We're looking through that. So visually, I don't think it's really carrying much weight. Up and down the street, as you saw in Mr. McDonough's testimony and photographs, we have a mix of attached garages, more than a few homes with no garages. So the parking is really, uh, you know, pretty informal. I think that's not atypical of a cul-de-sac, there's, there's no true traffic, so I think it's a little, little more free-form. But, uh, certainly we feel that the carport, its dimensions and placement are in keeping with the neighborhood, and the, uh, the use of it overall, uh, is, is in keeping with the house and the style of the house. And, um, I think those are really the points that, uh, that I wanted to bring up. I don't think there's anything else, uh, Richard, unless there's something I might have forgotten.
Mr. Finelli, uh, you emphasized that we're not seeking the FAR variance, that if the house, if approved, complies with the FAR requirements to the zoning ordinance of Princeton, am I correct?
Correct, we comply with the FAR, correct.
The existing house, as there now, uh, the height-to-setback ratio doesn't comply either, am I correct?
That's correct.
And would you say, in your opinion, as an architect, given the fact that it provides adequate light and air, that this, uh, height to, as you described in detail, the height-to-setback ratio is an improvement over what's there now?
It is, yes.
Okay. Well, I, as much as I have to do.
Mr. Shatsman, do you want these four pages marked as exhibit A-three?
Sure.
Okay, great, thank you.
A-three, as of two fifty.
Okay.
Okay, uh, I would like to have a summation of the planning testimony, uh, by the stand-in for Mr. McDonough, Mr. Doherty, so would you swear Mr. Doherty in, and, uh, I'll just qualify him, and he'll sum up, uh, after your qualifications, the, the planning, uh, testimony to Mr. uh, McDonough testified to on May twenty-sixth, okay?
I will, uh, Mr. Finelli, do you want to close, um, this document? That way we'll be able to see. There we go. Mr. Doherty, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Yep, thank you.
All right, Mr. Doherty, you want to give us the benefit of your background for the board's certification, please?
My license, planning in City of New Jersey, uh, PP, as well as a, a national, uh, license to AICP. License are both in good standing. I've been working with John McDonough for several years, um, postgraduate school. Uh, my educational requirements are from Blaustein, a master's in city and regional planning, as well as, um, concentration in, uh, public policy and, uh, development or redevelopment studies. Worked in the capacity as a senior planner for Jersey City, um, as well as, uh, within the zoning department and planning department. And I've been, uh, an acting community planner now for the past five years.
Now, what? I, I think we'll accept you as a professional.
But what did you do to get acquainted with this? Want to describe what you did to get acquainted with this, uh, application?
Um, yes, so, um, I think it's good planning practice to be familiar with, uh, the, the property and the surrounding neighbors. Um, I, I took it, um, a trip down to, uh, Princeton, um, on to, um, Wheat, Wheat, Wheat Lane, and spoke with a few of the neighbors, got a few of the, um, um, the bigger concerns, um, what's, uh, pressing with the neighborhood and, and the surrounding context, uh, with regards to his proposed development. I think, um, with regards to the application at hand, uh, you know, the big concern, um, from the community that I gathered was the, the brook in the back, um, there seems to be, um, some flooding from time to time. I, I assured a few of the neighbors that it's more of an engineering concern, and then there was the issue about the size of the building. And I think with, um, Ralph's, uh, testimony about the, uh, the scope of the size of the building, as far as there only being uh, an additional forty square feet larger than what's there today, I really hope that says some lights on the size of the building. I know FAR was definitely concerned for one of the neighbors. And, and in regards to that, I do believe, um, as my professional, uh, that the building that is being proposed is in great harmony, especially with, um, some of the, um, the buildings that are, the surrounding neighbors, um, especially to the right, um, with, as far as the, uh, the more box approach, um, I do think this is, uh, blends in well with the neighborhood. There are a few larger homes, uh, but that's more as the entrance into, uh, the, the community, but, um, I do think this is an appropriate size with what, um, is out there. There is a, a few ranch-style homes, a few, um, you know, Cape Cod-style homes, and then there are a few more modern homes, um, but substantially, it is a mix, and there are, um, two-story, um, homes that kind of meets, um, what is being proposed today. And, um, as far as, um, what the applicant is proposing today, the variances, except for the carport setback, the list of variances that are being proposed would exactly be the same list of variances that would be proposed for the, the building that is currently there today, the residential structure. Um, I think that's important to note, um, because when we talk about what we're proposing, we're talking about reducing the side yards by two and a half feet to the neighbors to the left, and over seven and a half feet to the neighbor to the right. So we're bringing this, um, building envelope inward and just kind of bringing it up and a little bit towards the back, respecting the limitations we have, which John McDonough testified, um, under the C-one. But as far as my professional opinion about the application, the carport, the few properties that do have, um, what would be considered a carport, they, they're all, uh, located in front of the building, uh, there's not a single carport there that is, uh, I believe it's, uh, thirteen feet, I'm sorry, sixteen feet behind the building that, that is non-existent. So if the carport, um, were to be approved, it is in great harmony with a few properties that do actually have the carport, that is a, a feature that is, is relevant throughout the neighborhood. And then, as far as the rest of the, um, application goes, uh, you know, a lot of the variances are pretty much to C-one standard because of the lot specifications. This is eleven thousand square foot lot versus a twenty-one thousand square foot lot. We're missing twenty-five feet, um, on both sides, so if we had the, the additional twenty- So if we had the the additional twenty-five feet, could some of the variance relief as far as that height to setback ratio be accommodated and 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 compliance? The answer is yes, we're bringing this more in compliance, as John said, moving that needle towards the direction of what the zone intent is. Um, and it's my, as a professional planner, I I do believe there is a lot of um, acknowledgement to what the zone is and moving that in that direction. This is a single-family home, eh, a great design work and I it's in great harmony. And as far as some of the features that John was touching off on before the storm kind of cut him off. The app, the the proposed application promotes purposes A, C, G, and I, uh, as well as M with the missile uh, criteria. Purpose A is to promote the public health, safety, morals, and welfare. There's nothing substantially uh, inherently dangerous with this proposed use, um, that currently exists there today. As far as C, promote adequate light air and open space, as we've heard several times, reducing those side yards by over seven feet and two and a half feet on the on the left. Um, we are moving that needle towards the zone intent as well as providing for the adequate uh, light air and open space. We have purpose G, sufficient space and appropriate locations for variety of uses. Um, and and to bro- and with their respective environmental um, requirements and constraints, we acknowledge the brook, we and 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 that nature. And the open waters back there, at the same time, we're not to encroach and and respect that. And we have purpose I, which is promote desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and civic design. I do believe this building um, touches that um, appropriately, giving the neighbor to the right. Um, has a very unique house um, from a a famous local architect. I do think this building complements that, um, with a lot of the same features. As well as a purpose I is to um, to promote desirable uh, environment as well as purpose M to encourage uh, public and private procedures of shaping the land development with lessening the cost of such development, if more efficient use of land. This plot of land, even though it's substantially undersized, it is an efficient use for a residential house. There's nothing substantially uh, dangerous with putting a residential house there. It accommodates one now and it certainly has since the late fifties and early sixties. This is simply a knock-down rebuild. And as Sean had indicated, with this current I to L ratio being below a one-to-one ratio, the improved value, the structure that there that is there now is is uh, a strong indicator that of the application, polite things of that nature, which have a new or more modern building on there would certainly bring up that uh, ratio um, to more of the accommodating analyticals of of the surrounding neighborhood. And as John was left off with the storm, the um, the justification for the relief, the relief is justified. Um, especially under the uh, the C balancing test, the the collective variances as a whole. Is there a public detriment to the safety and 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 public welfare and the intent of the zone plan? Um, is my professional opinion, there is not. So the balancing test here is the benefits outweighing the negatives. Um, do we, are are we insufficient on last size and and the bulks? Yes, um, is this a public detriment, is there ca- is there causing harm here? Um, no, so so with that being said, the the substantial last size is the hardship with the brook and the undersized lot. Um, it's my understanding that we can't acquire land to the left and to the right of us to to make up that twenty-five foot because, you know, there's um, viable residents on both sides. So we're kind of left with what we have. Could we go back and buy property on the back of the brook? From from my understanding, that wasn't an option. If there was an option, how would one get back on the other side of that property? The brook, it's not really feasible. Um, so as John pretty much touched on a lot of it. Um, and you know, this in turn does promote the purposes of the Princeton Mass uh, Master Plan. Relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public or the zone plan. And this side yard setbacks are adequate for light and air, open space. And the height to setback ratio provides better architectural um, proportions than currently exists. And the carport location, uh, recess garage is not typical for the street and uh, and for many uh, for the uh, the houses have them on the front. Um, we did not observe any regress garages, uh, meaning the sixteen feet behind the front facade. The project will have a positive impact on the neighborhood with minimal, if any, negative uh, effects. And statutory uh, for the grant of all relief are met and approval is warranted.
Okay, and I just have Mr. Scorpion just testify with one question, please. I think Derek, you gotta bring him in? Or that?
Okay, it looks like Mr. Sherpian is saying, I can't turn on my camera or unmute.
We go by phone. Well, once.
Can you hear me? And I'm, thank you for letting, yeah, thank, thank you for letting me in.
I hear you, Mr. Sherpian. Okay, I think we need to swear you in. I don't think you testified at the last hearing. So you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Scorpion, uh, you're the owner and the applicant in this application, am I correct?
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and uh, my advice, did you inquire by telephone the owner of the property back of you? Lamy Lot Thirty-four, Block Seventy-six oh one, to acquire land in order to make the lot size at least bigger? I mean, the frontage and the width, and there's nothing that could be done but to increase the size of your lot. Back basically double in size, did you pull him up? What was the result of that?
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago, I contacted the owner in the back, his name is Dirk Brinkman. Uh, I, I didn't know, but I happened to know him, uh, because he's a con- he's a, he's a, he's a Belgian and a former colleague. But I did discuss with him the matter, I did ask him whether there was any possibility to buy uh, part of the land in his, on, of course, the the back of his land. But that is not an option, so, but I I did reach out to him and I spoke personally to him a couple of weeks ago.
And uh, one last question, this house is being built for your daughter and your son-in-law? Your daughter's a doctor over at the medical center, am I correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So the uh, I'm ba- I'm basically doing this for my daughter and uh, her husband. They have two children, a one-year-old and a four-year-old son. Um, my daughter is a, is a physician at UPenn in in Philadelphia. As many of some of you may know, the hospital in in Princeton is associated with UPenn. Uh, she's a rheumatologist and they're gonna start up a practice within the hospital system or associated with the hospital system. And that's what she's gonna be doing, actually, as of, um, she just stopped or is stopping, is basically finishing in Philadelphia this week. And will start her new role, but still within the UPenn system, but uh, within within Princeton, yeah.
Okay, thank you, that's all the questions I have. So that's the case of the applicant. We're open to questions or comments.
Okay, can we um, we'll question any of your witnesses, um, board members? Do you have questions of anyone who's testified this evening or previous to this?
I have a question, um, Mr. Finelli. I I didn't, I just didn't understand what the two materials were that you were talking about on the outside of the house.
Sure, the exterior facade materials will be a blend of stucco and hardy board, a cement fiber siding.
Thanks.
Additional questions? Well, I have one. In most of our cases where we see new houses on undersized lots, people build within the envelope that's provided front, rear, and side yard setbacks. I understand you're you're decreasing the amount of, um, let's call it non-compliance with regard to the side yards. But what's preventing you from meeting that fifteen feet? It's a new house.
So the uh, the extra, the extra few feet just really renders the space, you know, I mean, far less useful. Um, you know, part of the, part of what we were working with was the existing footprint, the existing setbacks. So we did use it as our starting point, I understand the question. Um, but you know, we really, we really were, you know, just trying to get representative room sizes. None of the spaces inside of this house are, um, uh, I mean, I wouldn't call them anything other than modest. And to take another six feet off of the building would would render either, um, you know, kitchen far less useful. Uh, great room far less useful, eliminate a room entirely. And uh, and we just think that in terms of the, you you know, really matching the uh, home size and room sizes in the neighborhood, that the square footage for this house is correct. Uh, the setbacks, and again, I understand the question and compliance with the fifteen feet. But the uh, but the setbacks of twelve are much more in line with uh, with most of the neighbors and certainly the neighbors on both of our sides. So uh, I I appreciate the question, I understand it. Uh, we did the best we could and uh, but we did push out a little bit equidistant on both sides, really just to make that, you know, to make the house a suitable family home.
Oh, no, I I agree with what you're saying about room proportion and size. I mean, obviously, to pick up that extra square footage, you could extend the house forward or back a little bit to make it up.
Well, not to interrupt you, but I but I can't go back. I think as Mr. Schmidt testified, you know, we've got some environmental constraints uh, behind us. So uh, we we really couldn't.
Forward.
Uh, you know, but now we're taking living space, just getting closer to the street, you know? I understand, yes, you know, it's a, it's an elastic, right, it's an elastic band, we could make it deeper. But uh, uh, but i- in terms of the design of the spaces and taking advantage of the view, yes, we did go wider than deep, yes.
Yeah, I I just, again, it's it's a concern that I have because, again, it is a new house. And um, and in, like I said, in in new homes, uh, on undersized lots, uh, you know, it's pretty routine for us just to, uh, you know, with applicants coming in and saying we're building within the envelope to approve it. Now, I understand that the carport, because of the, because of the neighborhood character ordinance, should face aside, but obviously, I can understand in this case that that would be a bit problematic. I mean, you could turn the access to it, but that would put a bit more paving in the front yard. But this side yard setback bothers me. I'd like to hear from some of the other board members to get their opinion.
And and not to cut them off, but just the only other thing I would mention is we have limited those, uh, we are closer, but we have limited those sides to just one story tall. So, um, you know, just to help mitigate that, uh, it's a one, they're one story at that, at those limits.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other board members want to comment? Question? No one? Okay. I guess if we don't have any more comments from the board members, I'll open it up to the public for comments. Eve, do we have people who've raised their hands?
Um, not yet, but I.
I have three.
Now they have five. Yeah. Um, so we'll move them over to participants.
Okay.
Only Claudia is much faster than I am.
Okay, um, who'd like to start?
I'm happy to start, would like someone to volunteer.
Ms. Glavie, could you give us your address and then we'll swear you in?
Yeah, sixty-eight Drake's Corner Road in Princeton.
Alrighty, and you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm here this evening speaking on behalf of the Watershed Institute, is in my role as the Assistant Policy Director there. Last year, we were asked by residents of Weechee Lane to conduct a neighborhood flooding assessment to help them address flooding issues that they have been experiencing, particularly on the side of the street uh, where this uh, proposed house is located. As part of our analysis, we made site visits and collected survey data from eight households along Weechee. The stream bank running behind this street is experiencing serious erosion. And neighbors have repeatedly had flooding in their backyards where water can be one to two feet deep. Seven of the eight neighbors we surveyed have experienced flooding in their homes. Based on our work with other residents in the Harris Brook Watershed and as partners with the municipality's flood and stormwater commission, we know that flooding in this area is a detriment to the public good. Of additional concern, according to our state climatologist and the New Jersey DEP's twenty-twenty New Jersey Scientific Report on Climate Change, the intensity of storms is predicted to continue to increase. The report points out that a hundred-year, twenty-four-hour storm, which describes the depth of rain that has a one percent chance of occurring within a twenty-four-hour period, is based on the likelihood of occurrence as measured from historic data. As future precipitation events become more intense, this historic data may no longer represent actual or current conditions. And this represents a serious threat uh, to Weechee Lane. And we expect that erosion and flooding will become worse over time. In addition, we recently computed an impervious cover assessment for the municipality of Princeton. According to our analysis, twenty percent of the land in the Harris Brook Watershed, where this Weechee Lane is located, is covered with impervious surface. Science tells us that once a watershed is ten percent covered with impervious surface, its waterways show impairment. Princeton's Green Building and Environmental Sustainability Element states, "To improve water quality and mitigate flooding, Princeton should strive to reduce impervious cover below ten percent. This can be achieved even as Princeton continues to grow, since redevelopment offers the opportunity through green infrastructure best practices to make the built environment more absorbent and substantially reduce stormwater runoff from properties that currently have a high level of impervious cover. When sites are redeveloped, it's critical that impervious cover be reduced, not increased, even though the increase in this instance is a moderate." So we believe that approving the requested variances for this project would result in a detriment to the public good for the following reasons. The current issues the neighbors are experiencing with flooding, which is as ti- at times one to two feet deep, and per the neighbors' reports, has reached up to the edge of the existing home on the lot. The existing erosion of the stream bank, which is accelerating and threatening neighbors' properties more seriously every year. This erosion also increases total suspended solids in the water, contributing to compromised water quality, as well as the uh, existing level of impervious cover in the watershed. A smaller house that decreases impervious cover on the property and also integrates green infrastructure practices and a vegetated buffer between the house and the stream would protect the future inhabitants of this house from the floods that are certain to come and contribute to the efforts that the neighborhood is making to work together to address their severe flooding challenges. For any home that's constructed on this site, we recommend the following steps to increase resiliency and mitigate stormwater runoff. Use native plants to establish a riparian zone along the brook to filter and slow stormwater runoff and combat erosion. Plant additional trees using native species. Require the use of green infrastructure to capture stormwater runoff created by the home. In conclusion, Weechee Lane is sandwiched between stormwater runoff coming down the hill and a very flashy stream below. Building the house currently proposed and granting the requested variances, we believe would represent a detriment to the public good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you want to ask Mr. Schmidt comment on that?
Okay.
Um, I was trying to dig up, actually, the flood plain, um, we're, where am I?
Mr. Schmidt, we we swore you in at the last meeting, so you're still under. Mr. Schmidt, we, we swore you in at the last meeting, so you're still under oath, okay?
Thank you.
Um, I'm a, you know, I'm thirty-five-year engineer, um, hydrologist. I delineated uh, fifty or sixty streams in my day. Um, forty square feet is an increase uh, of an additional impervious surface coverage. And three thousand square feet or what we have on this property is, is nothing very negligible. Let me dig this up. Our proposed impervious surface coverage is two thousand eight hundred nineteen square feet. We're proposing that increase in forty, forty square feet. And this watershed that we have for the Harry's Brook is acres, uh, could be a hundred acres. Um, and to make a stream, um, increase in depth, uh, you know, what you're allowed for DEP is two tenths of a foot, and I've done many subdivisions, and it takes a lot of impervious surface coverage for you, mud water elevation, not two thousand square feet or three thousand square feet. Um, so by decreasing this impervious surface coverage on this property would result in absolutely nothing. Um, it would not help the flooding problems that are occurring. Um, as Sophie was saying, we are experiencing a very high uh, intensity change. Um, the rainfall that used to be seven point five inches for the hundred-year storm has increased to be eight point two for the region that you're in. We're also experiencing, um, more frequent storms, and that's where the flooding is really coming into place. And the most, the, the storming that we had back several years ago is, wasn't that we had a hundred-year storm event, it's that we had a fifty-year storm event, and then we had a twenty-five-year storm event, and then we had another fifty-year storm event, and the creeks were already at crest. So when the third storm hit, that's when the flooding occurs. So we are seeing our streams being impacted a lot more. Um, but there's, there's not much you can do about what mother's nature's throwing at you. I mean, you, you can decrease the impervious, but that's not going to change with the overall is the intensity of the storm. Uh, so I don't agree that mitigating the impervious surface coverage is going to help Harry's Brooks flood problems. But I do agree that we could help by, we do have a fifty-foot riparian buffer. Uh, the DEP is, um, just weeks away from approving my submission that I made, uh, as far as wetlands and as far as floodplain. Um, I know exactly what we can plan as, uh, repairing mitigation. Our, our whole property drains to the, or most of the property drains to the crock, the, the brook. Um, there's a fifty-foot repairing buffer in place. We could vegetate that with, uh, with NJDEP approved vegetation, and we could add, uh, maybe four, five, six deciduous trees that are approved by DEP uh, in the rear of the property to absorb whatever increase and reduce the amount of increase, because the more, uh, vegetation, the more deciduous trees that you have soak up more of the, of, of the, um, the rainfall. So, uh, I would propose that we do some type of, uh, repairing vegetation and add some additional trees, because we did have to knock down um, a series of existing trees, uh, which we did get at the ordinance to approve, that were all dead. So we would be more than happy to put some type of vegetation and additional trees to mitigate, uh, what we're proposing.
And we, and, and after Paul and Mr. Cohen's, uh, comment about the side yard.
I can't hear who's talking now. If that's Mr. Schmidt, I can't hear him.
No, it's, it's Mr. Schatzman. Can you speak up, Richard?
Yeah.
Andrew. Where'd it go?
He's back.
What I would, uh, for Mr. Cohen's concern, and I understand his concern, is for us to increase the amount of trees, uh, buffer along the side yards, especially the smaller side yard, so that it mitigates the, uh, which wasn't there before, mitigates the, uh, the side yard variance. So you, you know, on, on, it's, as a planner, and, uh, Mr. Doughty can, can, uh, concur on that, I hope, that if you, sometimes where you have a, a smaller side yard, backyard, or front yard, if you you, use a, a nice strong buffer, you can mitigate the deleterious effect that that smaller, uh, yard distance has. So we'd be willing, in order to, uh, ameliorate the, uh, the condition to plant trees, uh, along the, uh, along the side yards, uh, abundant trees, I would say, in order to, uh, take away the det- what detriment there is for the side yard setback variances. That's what I would say. I don't know whether you want to agree with that or not, but that's a way of mitigating the, the problem.
I, I understand what you're saying. I, uh, I go back to what I said originally that, uh, you know, it's, it's, uh, pretty difficult of what we do, what we've done um, with new houses on existing lots. And, um, it just concerns me. I understand that.
Just throwing it out.
That's fine. I appreciate it.
I'm throwing it out of what has been done in other applications.
Okay. All right.
And I, um, Mr. Cohen, I, I agree with you. It seems to me that, um, if you don't start with a problem, you don't have to mitigate it. So, you know, I'm not.
Very good point. Okay, uh, do we want to go to the next, uh, person?
Carolyn, Carolyn, I see your hand up. Carolyn Rouse.
Ms. Rouse, could you give us your address, please?
Eighty-four Wee Chief Lane.
And do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
So, um, I, I published the app, uh, the essay in the town topics about some of our experiences. It was published a couple of weeks ago. I don't know if I need to repeat that. Um, so it's a beautiful house. It'd be great if it was built somewhere else. Um, you know, I think that, um, w- we see a lot of the design. We don't actually see what the plan is for the back. I talked, I heard people talking about a view. Well, if you have a view, it means you're not producing a riparian buffer that's necessary for that space. Um, when we had a tour in the back, there was clear, it was clear that a number of people tried to build walls to protect. The walls just get caved in because the water's so strong, it eats away the back. The other thing that happens is that your daughter will have her house, she might have a wall, and then the flooding comes from the street. It doesn't just because the houses have had variances up on, there's so many variances at this point. They're adding variance on top of variance on top of variance, and so now we have so much water. I had flooding coming from the street down to my, down my yard. So your daughter will have flooding coming down to the street, and then the wall will retain the water. So she'll have a soggy lot with a wall keeping the water in, because it's supposedly protecting from the brook, and then the brook's going to be chipping away at the wall. You know, it's, there's rules for a reason. And it's time that we stick to the rules until we can figure something out, because this is damaging. I have a ha- a lot that's twice the size, and I have a house that's so much smaller than the house that's being planned. And the only way I can survive is with the swale that I built with the rain, serious rain garden, with the two dry creeks that I have, with the riparian buffer, that's a real riparian buffer and not a wall and not a, it's, it's about leaving it to be, and, and the slope in the back of that, of that lot is so steep, I don't even know what that riparian buffer is going to look like. There's that, basically, there will be no space for a backyard. So I don't really understand what the, what the backyard plan is with respect to the, to creek, and that's in the public interest. The house is gorgeous. We all agree with that. But the public interest is, a number of these people here are downstream of the, of this. And we've already had another case recently, variance were given, promises of building rain gardens. They put plants that keep dying, trees that keep dying because they're not indigenous, promises, promises that are not kept. And who's hurt by that? It's not just the people who own, of the current homeowners. It's also the people who bought from that developer who are struggling with the water issues, because the water issues are still the water issues. They never mitigated it. Promises, promises, variances, variances. It's just, it has to stop. I'll stop there.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, well, I'm speaking for this applicant and his variance. Um, I don't know what was done in prior applications. Uh, I am following the rule book. I am following what the rules that are for this property. And the first thing that we did prior to purchasing this property was we did an environmental assessment. We had, uh, Amy Jones from Devise Environmental do a walk line to make sure the wetlands weren't extensive. I enter, I, I looked at the floodplain. I'm very well aware of the repairing buffer. I'm very well aware of that there are two repairing buffers. The, the total's fifty feet, the other is twenty-five. The first twenty-five you can't touch for DEP. The second twenty-five you can touch. Uh, we have a little bit lawn in the backyard. We're allowed to keep the lawn that's there. That's part of the approval that I'm seeking. Uh, the next twenty-five feet, I can't touch. It's going to be a riparian buffer. It's going to go right back to the natural, um, surroundings that it was. Uh, I don't understand the rules that other developers aren't following. This is a rule. This is a submitted document that was placed to the DEP. Uh, this floodplain and flood hazard is going to be filed at the county in Somerset. It's going to have language that Richard Schatzman's going to, uh, have to draw up. It's going to have meets and bounds description. It's going to document that this is critical lands that can't be touched ever. Your adjacent property to your left, your adjacent property to your right, if you're not asking for a permit, like, uh, maintaining a lawn or, or cutting lawn all the way to the, the brook, that's not Derek's responsibility. He doesn't have rules for that. Um, you know, we will have rules in place. This plan will be approved with the current NJDP standards. He, he won't be allowed to do things that the next people do. They're, they are restricted. And, you know, if we want to put a shed in the backyard, they're just going to have a set of plans. It's going to say, Dave, that's in a conservation ethic. You can't do that. It's, it's prohibited. So we have, um, two areas of repairing zone. The first twenty-five feet is going to be untouched. It's, it was lawn. It's going to be, go back to the nature. That's going to give you your filter strip. The next twenty-five feet on the property lines, it's going to be still wooded, but in the center, there is a lawn, and that lawn that we're allowed to maintain was there pre-existing prior to the, uh, the pool. So that's the view that they're going to have. I have a stream in my backyard, um, just as similar as Harry's Brook. I've had kids, um, and you do not want your kids out there on a heavy rainstorm, because they will get washed away. Um, I, I'm very familiar with, with the flooding problems on the floodplain as it goes downstream. As I looked at the firm map, as you were talking, as, uh, as Sophie was talking, you know, we are a little bit higher, but as the, as the, the stream goes down, these houses are basically somewhat in the floodplain, um, which we are not, and that, that's, that's a problem. Um, but that's not a problem that can be cured by, by, you know, telling someone they can't add impervious surface coverage upstream. It, it's not, it's not that easy. You can reduce impervious, but impervious is only one element of the whole picture. And that's your intensity, that's your drainage area, and then, then you have what is called a C coefficient. You put all those together, that's what creates it. But just, you know, telling someone they can't put a shed is not going to make your flooding any less or worse. Um, but we are doing what we're, we're supposed to be doing in twenty twenty-one per the NJDP regs, and, and we submitted this um, full set of plans with an application, which is on file with the, uh, with the township, uh, for review. So we are expect, expecting to have an approval from DEP, um, by the deadline, which is July fourteenth. Uh, the last thing they asked me to provide was the, uh, stamped, uh, stamped plan from the, uh, surveyor, um, which we scanned in and gave it to her. So we're all set for getting all the DEP rules and all the necessary permits, the soil erosion permits that are required for the project.
Uh, does Mr. Purcell, who I see is here, does he have any comment on this?
Mr. Purcell, if you're going to testify, we just need to swear you in. You swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
Just wondering who asked that question. I didn't see.
Richard Schatzman, the attorney.
Oh, Mr. Schatzman. Um, I, I, I don't have any additional comment. The, uh, the application complies with all of the engineering, uh, ordinances and, and they've, uh, applied for and, and are obtaining all of the necessary environmental permits. Um, there's really not much else that I could add.
Thank, thank you.
Um, Terry Adams, I think, wants to speak next. So if we, if we could swear her in.
Ms. Adams, could you give us your address first?
Sure.
I'm sorry, seventy-four Wee Chief. I see it. Um, sorry. Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Um, I live at seventy-four Wee Chief, which is downstream from this house. On the same side of the street, Harry's Brook is in my backyard. I've been a resident over twenty years there. I'm one of the residents who's had over eighteen inches of water in her house because of Harry's Brook overflowing. Two weeks ago, we had a thunderstorm for about fifteen minutes, and Harry's Brook went from a trickling stream to three, two and a half feet higher, raging down. If the rain had continued, we would have had a flood. Um, I, I love that Mr. Cohen brought up the, the point about this is a new home, and the architects and those for the owner are talking about matching the home size in the area. The neighbor to the left is eighteen hundred square feet. The neighbor to the right is seventeen hundred and seventy-two square feet. The neighbor across the street is seventeen hundred ninety-eight square feet. The neighbor to their left is seventeen hundred and sixty-eight square feet. Although you did say it's not a full thirty-three hundred square feet, I think you said it was twenty-seven sixty-eight. We're talking a thousand square feet, larger home. This is not in character with the neighborhood. It may be in character with a new build at the corner of the street, which all the neighbors who are here protested two years ago, but it's not in character with the main part of Wee Chief Lane. The other piece around the stormwater, the gentleman, and I think it was Mr. Finelli's associate, mentioned at the last meeting that there would be no stormwater remedies required. And I think, you know, if there are any in play or in place that you plan to do, I think they should have been brought up at this meeting, because I haven't heard one thing about those remedies. Um, and yes, they took down trees in the back that were dead. They were dick, um, uh, what do you call, uh, they were diseased. But there were a slew of, of, um, trees in the front yard that were not diseased, and they were mowed down as well. That property has not one tree or bush remaining on it, the entire lot. And then my last point is really the whole idea that we're overbuilding on an existing lot. And yes, kudos that you're giving us back another ten feet on one side and fifteen on the other, but you're still not within regulation. And this property is a tiny property. It's not a property that is meant to carry a home of this size. Most of the lots are exactly the same size, although I think this lot is a little bit lo- uh, smaller than, uh, some of the other lots on the street. So I really plead with the board to consider having them redo the format of this home, so that it is more in line with the neighborhood, and so that future developers don't use this case as setting a precedent to allow them to overbuild on an existing lot, because the house that was there prior was already out of variance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, can I comment first?
Yeah, I just want to clarify one item, though. As far as the, the size of the house, the proposed building is within the, the FAR requirements of the zone. So there, there is no terms of overall size, square footage. We are not seeking a variance for the size of the house, but we are fully conforming with the FAR limitations.
And I, I just want, I just want to. I'm just saying your emphasis is on in character with the neighborhood, and that is not true.
I know.
I know. Listen, I don't, I don't.
That's inaccurate.
No, I don't want to debate it, but you you picked three houses that I think there's.
I could, I could, I could give you more than three.
I'm I'm just saying that, you know, besides the complying with the FAR, the FAR is a limiting factor. And and it is complying with the FAR. And it just in general. So that's all. I just wanted to point that out. We're we're in conformance with that.
And could I make a comment please? Can I make a comment?
You gotta get closer to the microphone.
I can hear you.
I think so. I think that if. If the real, real, real concern, and I know there's concerns, the real, real concern is the side yard, Mr. Cone. I think the applicant would be willing to redesign the house. If you approve. The house with a redesign like we did with Mr. Sodano on Harrison Street. To redesign a house with fifteen foot side yards. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you.
If you want to do that. You know, I we're we're agreeable to that. We've cut off the. Mr. Finelli can do whatever he can to make it fifteen feet.
Lost you there.
Well, I'll just fill in the blanks for Mr. Schatzman because we were, as many people do, we're texting between things. So. You know, I think where he was going was, I'll let him finish himself. Go ahead, Rich. You lost here for a second. You want to finish that thought, please?
What I said to Mr. Cone is that Mr. Finelli can design a house. Or cut down the the great room, whatever has to be cut out. To do a fifteen foot setback for side yards on both sides, the left and the right. That's concern of the board. That's what we'll do. And so you have a house therefore that. Conforms that it's a true hardship as far as the depth. I'm sorry, the the width, the frontage and the area and will be within except for the. Carport, which you talked about, that at least the house would be within the side yards. Right?
Thank you. Yeah. Okay, do we have the next?
Jane Manners.
Hi.
I am. Could we first get your address?
Sure, sixty-one Wee Chief Lane.
And you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
So I wanted to correct two misimpressions that you might have gotten from John McDonough's presentation in the last meeting. Miss Mr. Dougherty, who I met today when he was on the street getting a sense of the neighborhood, was a little bit more accurate in his account. But the first thing that. I want to correct is the idea that number forty-four Wee Chief Lane is kind of a blighted lot. With a rundown house and no trees. Terry alluded to this, as did, I believe, Mr. Schmidt in conversation to the fact that number of trees were torn down. My emails with the town arborist indicate that there were at least thirteen trees removed. Mr. Dougherty told me today there were sixteen trees removed. Some of those trees were dead. Six of those trees were dead, in fact. Some of the trees interfered with power lines were growing into the roofline of the house. So they true understandably needed to be taken down. But not all of the trees were dead or interfered with the roofline or the power lines. There are also several healthy ornamental trees, again, according to the email with Taylor Sapadour, the town arborist, that were cut down from the lot. And so if you may, you might recall John McDonough's photographs from his presentation. It looked horrible, just like big. Empty landscape in the middle of an otherwise wooded street, but that is because the trees were taken down from the lot. So I wanted to correct that misimpression. Misimpression. And if you'll let me, I'm just going to show you a screen. An image of the house. I took this picture in November of twenty eighteen. So that is what the lot looked like prior to the cutting down of all the trees and vegetation. I also wanted to speak a little bit to. But the character of the street and the the water problem that Carolyn has alluded to and that Sophie from the Watershed Institute alluded to and has been working on. Terrifically with her colleagues. As they try to help figure out what Princeton can do to mitigate its water problems. So I'm going to share another. Image. This is an image. I have four of them from the flooding that Carolyn alluded to, a rainstorm last summer. It produced flooding on the street. This is not flooding from Harry's Brook. This is simply runoff from the houses on the south side of the street. So I'm going to show you. There are four houses, four images of this water, which are quite remarkable. That is the water heading downstream. It hasn't yet reached number forty-four. Again, this is that water from a little further down the street. And another scene. So those are four images that show you what happens when it rains hard on Wee Chief Lane. There is a serious water problem. And it's not just from Harry's Brook and impervious surface, while it may not be. The only source of the problem, as Mr. Schmidt pointed out, it is certainly one of the sources of the problem, and it's a source that Princeton is paying attention to and needs to pay attention to. I also want to correct a misimpression that Terry has spoken to about the character of the houses on our street. So I actually did some math on this two years ago when I was trying to figure out what our average house size was. So the. Median house size on our street is nineteen hundred square feet. So. Terry was not cherry picking houses when she was telling you the sizes of the houses across the street and to the side of the of number forty-four. That is, in fact, very typical of the houses on our street. I in fact have here houses, pictures of all the houses on our street, which I will share with you. So you get a sense. This is one of the larger houses. Again, another of the larger houses, another small house hidden by pine trees, a small ranch. Another small ranch, another small ranch, another small ranch. One larger house. This is the largest house on our street. It is over three thousand square feet. My house, one of the larger houses on the street, twenty-five hundred square feet. And again, you see other houses not so big. So so. When my neighbors tell you that the character of this street is one of small houses, they are not exaggerating. You might also notice that none of the garages or carports are for two cars. And in fact, that large house I showed you a moment ago, that's over three thousand square feet. When it sought a variance in twenty-ten, it was obliged to reduce the size of its garage from two car to one car in order to fit with the character of the street. So that is a quick survey of the houses on our street to give you a sense that we really are talking about. About small, small houses on our street. Finally, the thing I really want to speak to is just how out of conformity the owners' plans are. So my understanding is that under the zoning laws in Princeton, to build any house in section R five, which is our part of town. You need to have a lot size that is twenty-one thousand seven hundred eighty square feet. Now, the lot the applicant has purchased is only eleven thousand one hundred and seventy-five square feet. I believe that's why Mr. Dougherty and Mr. Schmidt have talked about it as a hardship. That is a difference of fifty-one percent. So another way of putting that is that. It's not out of conformity by eight percent, twelve percent, or even twenty percent. The applicant needs a hundred and ninety-five percent more land to build a house on that lot that he has. And this, I fear, is a concern because it really sets a precedent for teardowns, right? It's unfair to the seller's estate. So the woman who inherited this lot after her mother passed away had hoped to hold on to the house. She wasn't able to because she lived far away. And so she had to sell the lot and she had to sell it as undersized and non-conforming. And that meant it costs less money, right? It sat on the market for a while and it was pretty cheap relative to other homes in Princeton because of that fact. She, had she been able to sell the lot. As conforming, she probably would have been able to sell it for more money. Second, it's unfair to neighbors like me and my other neighbors on Wee Chief Lane who live on small lots as well. And we abide by the zoning laws, which are designed precisely to forbid putting up such large buildings on such small lots. And finally, and most importantly, the variance sets a precedent that I am worried about for teardowns in this town, right? So if you grant it, I don't see what is to stop the next developer. Or the next fourteen or two hundred developers from coming before you and saying they want a non-conforming variance too. So again, this is not like, oh, we're eight percent out. That's a true hardship. We're twelve percent out, we're twenty percent of conformity. It's not that. They're a hundred and ninety-five percent out of conformity. So. If you grant this variance, I don't really understand how you can deny any others. And if you can't deny variance, then I don't see what the point is of having zoning laws at all. So as I see it, this is not a case of hardship. It's a buyer who knowingly bought a dilapidated house on a non-conforming lot. And because of that, he paid less than he otherwise would have. And now he wants a variance to effectively make the lot conforming. To tear down a house that is thirteen hundred and thirty-seven square feet and replace it with a house that is thirty-three hundred square feet. And it's on a lot that's half the size of what he needs to be. And I'm happy this lot has been purchased. I think the building design is beautiful. I'm happy to have a new neighbor. But I'm not looking forward to having an oversized lot house built on a lot of this size. And I'm really not happy at the prospect of having the zoning board set a precedent that developers will come and take advantage of. Thank you.
Ms. Manners, quick, quick question for you, Ms. Manners. You provided a set of photos. So I'm assuming you'd like us to put them in the record and make them an exhibit. So you took all those photos, correct? You you personally, you did. All right.
Yes, November twenty eighteen.
Okay, thank you.
Well, just let me comment. We have a number of lots in Princeton that are undersized. Created many, many years ago. We asked neighbors, we asked applicants to see if they can acquire any additional land. In most cases, they really can't. And, you know, effectively. It it it, in what you're saying, it almost renders the lot useless. With regard to building a new house. If they had a smaller house on the lot, they could easily build up. And create that square footage within the setback. So. It's a difficult problem and teardowns are an issue and there are a number of them in Princeton. But in this particular case. They're asking for several variances, one of which they said they would eliminate. They meet all the other regulations of the zone. And like we have in a number of different areas. You know, they're basically, they're basically conforming. To the requirements of the lot. But it's not, with the exception of the size of the lot, which they can't do.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that. There is a distinction between tearing down a house and building a new one and renovating and expanding the size of the existing one. So. I'm actually like, I'm kind of agnostic as to the design. I do think thirty-three hundred square feet is out of character with the neighborhood. I would like to see that reduced. But what I'm more concerned with is that. It's one thing to build a house. Renovate it, change its size, add square footage in the process of that. It's another thing to tear down and build a new one. And I say that because I think about developers who are probably going to be less inclined to buy a house they need to renovate, right? They'll be much more attracted to the idea of buying a small house on a non-conforming lot, tearing down that house and then building a bigger house in its place. So it's really that kind of teardown versus renovation distinction that I'm focused on.
You're not wrong, but the but we're here at the zoning board and we we basically. Base our decisions on regulations created by the town. And the the lot that they have is the house that was designed meets the criteria. For that lot, with the exception of the variances they're asking for, which they can eliminate or. In most cases, and so it it quite frankly leaves us very little choice but to. But to. You know, look favorably upon it. I'm not disagreeing with anything you're saying, but. It happens, it's happened in a number of areas, a number of homes in Princeton. Older homes. I mean, Princeton is a thriving community with ever increasing property values and. You know, people want to take advantage of that. Of that.
No, I I get the dynamic, believe me. And I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but I just don't understand what the point is of having R five zoning laws if they're just kind of something that you just. People get around them because they're so.
We're not, we're not. We're not just casting them aside. We're following guidelines that have been established. We're we're requesting that the envelope. That the building is allowed to be built in, the front yard, the side yard and the rear yard be maintained. The height to setback ratios, the impervious coverage. I mean, all those, all those have to be maintained. But it is an undersized lot. So. It may not be a satisfactory explanation, but it's an explanation.
Well, I appreciate the explanation.
Okay. Ms. Manners, could you make sure that you give the board secretary a copy of all these photos that you've just shared with the board?
Yeah, sure. I think I have Claudia's email address. I can send them to her.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Jane, you keep on saying developers. This is Mark Scorpion. He's building this for his daughter.
You gotta get, David, you gotta get wherever your mic is, guys. You gotta get closer to it.
It's dying here. Um, we'll look at it. Uh, you keep on saying developers. Uh, this is Mark Scorpion and he's building this house for his daughter. And I'm an engineer. I do a lot of work. Steve, Steve knows me. Most of the board members know me. I represent developers. And I would not steer my client to buy this lot. Any developer would not buy this lot. Okay, we just wouldn't. You know, I told this to Mark. It's 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 a tough. You don't want to go to a zoning board application. But I've taken a lot. This is not unusual. There's the the zoning was not in place when these lots were created. Okay? So you're in the R five. This could be in the R eight. I mean, it it's just the way it is. It's a very, it is a hardship. Mark Scorpion wants to build a nice house in in this neighborhood. We're meeting the FAR requirements. We are undersizing lot area. There's nothing we can do about that. We can't go left, we can't go left to right, we can't go forward. And if we go back, it's useless. It's the other side of the street. So we're doing what we can. But this is not a developer. This is a, this is a person that wants to live in this neighborhood.
I I would say I'm actually, I I take no position on whether Mark Scorpion is a developer or not. I says, look, his daughter sounds lovely and we would welcome on another street and we have lots of doctors here already, so we can have lots of doctors hanging out together. I'm just saying that this sets a precedent for developers and I'm heartened to hear that you would still steer developers away from a lot like this, but I think each measure, each step like this seems right. It sets a precedent.
Well, we're not. We're we're within the FAR, so you're.
Yes, but you're, but it's an undersized law. I understand. I mean, listen, I'm not a land use lawyer. I'm a tort lawyer.
If you say it's an, if it's just going to be a rundown house forever, I mean, you. And if you want to move where your Jason property wants to move, what, when the when the shoe's on your foot, what are you going to do?
Listen, I I understand. I understand the arguments you're making. I also see how a town slowly but surely over time becomes kind of. All the affordable housing in town gets whittled away as you, as you, as these variances get granted.
Sorry. For the record, for the record, this subdivision, I read the title, the subdivision was created by Princeton Bank and Trust Company in nineteen forty-five. So so you're talking about, what, eighty years ago? And that's why the lots are where they are. I mean, years ago, there were smaller lots. And, you know, with all due respect, Ms. Manners. Each case rests on its own facts. So you cannot say, and I'm a lawyer who does land use for the last fifty-three years. Well, Scorpion got a variance for his lot. I I'm I'm too lost out. I want a variance for my lot. Each case rests on its own facts.
Right. I talked to that. I talked about that with Mr. Dougherty today. I understand that and that there are certain factors that are legally cognizable and that will give rise to an appeal and that there are certain factors that aren't. But I also know that precedent is powerful for deliberative body, even if these are not legally cognizable facts.
Steve.
Okay, Michael, yeah.
Since, you know, we've we've heard the word precedent many times from Ms. Manner, and I understand. It's not a precedent. How we handle undersized lots, which cannot be cured. We can either say you can't build anything. You can't build a one-room building because it's still undersized. So it maybe if our attorney could explain that it's not a precedent. We've we've approved undersized lots all the time. But you have to build a smaller house that meets the very, the the code on bulk. So let me defer to Karen.
Well, I mean. Because it's a zoning board, this is the kind of case that comes before this board. They are dealing with the existing ordinances in the town. So. They have to reconcile those ordinances. With. Situations that come to them where the lot is undersized and there are many, many undersized lots in Princeton. That's why the board asks owners, can you acquire other land? Because when we look at the municipal land use law and the cases that arise under it. How is a hardship defined? Now, what happens is in terms of. Now, what happens is in terms of precedent, I have to agree with Mr. Floyd's comment that it's, the board really does look at the facts of every case. They will spend considerable time looking at the facts and making a distinction between what may have happened on one property and the property that is in front of them right now. In this situation, I mean, certainly the applicant can be asked, are they willing to reduce the size of the house? Because to tell the applicant they cannot build on the lot creates a situation in which essentially it becomes a useless lot. And I'm not sure that that's what you're proposing. I don't, I don't suspect that that's what you're saying. Your concern is the size, that it is oversized for your street and for that property. This, the question of the size of houses is one that the board has wrestled with. And they, as has been pointed out, it meets the floor ratio requirements of the town. So it's a matter of weighing, is it subjective to say it's too big? Is it, what is too big? It's thirteen, I think you said thirteen hundred square feet is the existing house. So between that and what is proposed is an area where, I don't know, I don't know what size becomes acceptable. Certainly, the applicant can be asked, are they willing to reduce the size of the house? And I don't know if anybody on the board wants to raise that with the applicant and, and ask that. They've already said they'll redesign to comply with the side yards. I don't know if they're willing to reduce the size of the house as well. We've heard testimony about environmental impacts, but at the same time, it's being submitted to NJDP, which supersedes our authority. And they are reviewing it now for compliance with state standards. So it seems to me that, you know, yes, a recourse for the board would be to ask, are you willing to make it smaller? But truly, each of these cases does present its own facts. And the board really does spend a great deal of time looking at the facts of every single situation. That's why frequently the meetings are not short because they are not simply saying, well, that's fine. You know, we, we gave a variance to somebody else. You'll get one too. That's, that's not how they've conducted themselves. So I don't know if that answer is helpful, if anybody on the board wants to add to that. And if the applicant wants to indicate whether they might be willing to reduce the size of the house to try and address the concerns that we're hearing from the neighbors. And I know we haven't heard from everyone yet. I, I realize that there are more comments out there.
I don't want to answer for my client, but if I could just address the, the perception of the size of the house. I, I just want to reiterate a couple of things, you know? And it was great to see the photographs Ms. Manners provided. I think if you looked at almost every one of those homes, they were, I'm, I'm just going to say traditional construction with a gable roof and an attic. So it might have been a two-story house. It might have met the fifteen-foot setbacks. But a simple two stories and an attic is going to be, is going to appear to be about eight to ten feet taller than the building that we have proposed, simply by virtue of having an attic. We have designed the building with flat roofs. We've designed the building that is not uniformly two-story footprint. So the first floor again is wide, the second floor is narrow. So there's, there's, there's quite a lot of, quite a lot of, of the perceived size of the building that really will be smaller, appear less than the square footage that it, that it encloses compared to any traditional two-story home with an attic. And that's, I mean, that's just a simple fact. The building is from the ground to the, to the top of the roof, I believe, where eighteen or nineteen feet. Any of the two-story homes there with an attic and a moderate seven or eight to twelve roof pitch is going to be, you know, anywhere from seven to ten feet taller than that to the ridge. So.
Just to clarify, I think it's only about six or seven homes out of the twenty-four on our street that have two stories. So they are most one-story houses.
Yeah, but just, you know, just as a, as a point of fact, you know, we've designed a building, a flat roof building that does not take it, you know, that does not extend beyond its actual conditioned envelope. So the perception of that building will certainly be less than the square footage it includes.
Thank you. One thing, just a general comment that, that anybody in the public who does want to speak to this application will, will get an opportunity to raise your hands and, and Eve Coulson will recognize you. And you will get an opportunity to speak. Okay, next.
Rebecca Graves is next.
Ms. Graves, could you give us your address, please?
I can. I think Carolyn had her hand up first. Carolyn?
I saw your hand up Rebecca first. I just wanted to say something in response to what was said.
All right, thank you. So my name is Rebecca Graves. I live at sixty-two Wee Chief.
And will this swear you in, Ms. Graves? Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Yes, I live at the palatial nineteen hundred and twenty feet, sixty-two Wee Chief Lane. And I just want to say, like, I, you know, this is a really charming house, but I understand it's not a house with one bathroom, et cetera, et cetera, that, that makes sense for today's family. So I understand this. I would like to say though, that while I really understand and take to heart, you know, the board's revendication of the fact that, you know, this is not setting a precedent. It's just hard to believe that, you know, that the, a deliberate body that continually sets a precedent of, of granting a variance that's more than fifty percent off of the site doesn't sort of set, doesn't sort of communicate something to the broader community. And as a middle income person who struggled for a long time to find a house in Princeton, this really concerns me about kind of affordable housing in Princeton because these houses are not going to be, you know, and even if this is a, a house that Mr. Scorpion is building for his daughter, the houses that are built are not at a price point that's, that's available for kind of middle income families. So I just wanted to put that out there. I just want to second and, you know, raise up the voices of my neighbors. I also would like, if I can share my screen, because we've talked a lot about the flooding that happens from the street, which is significant and which I think is under recognized. And I really appreciate the watershed and Sophie and what they've done for us. But I also want to show you what the flooding from Harry's Brook looks like. So if I can share my screen, I'm going to show you. And granted, this is July thirtieth. This is July thirtieth nineteen, uh, twenty sixteen. I don't know if everyone can see that, but this is my backyard. Okay, and we, the, the owners before me had done some, some scaling in the back, so it comes up here. This went all the way up into my neighbor's basement. I'm sure Terry had, you know, serious flooding. This was obviously a very big flood event. I'm happy to submit this for the record, but this is, this is actually what we're dealing with. This is what is in the back of the, of the property. And this is why when it comes from both sides, it's, it's incredibly dangerous for, for all of us. So I'll stop sharing now. I just would also like to say that it's, it, it, you know, just to second the fact that, you know, keep in keeping with the neighborhood, the impervious surface. You know, none of this was said in this hearing, but in the previous hearings, disingenuous of, the disingenuousness of saying that, that they were adding trees to the lot when so many had been taken away, further reducing the ability of the lot to sort of absorb stormwater was really galling to me. So I'm just going to stop there. I'd like to let my other neighbors speak. The ones who haven't had a chance to speak are Carolyn, who had something to add. So without, oh, oh.
Ms. Graves, just, just to confirm, when did you take this photo of your backyard?
July thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen.
All right, and you would like us to put that on the record, so we will make that an exhibit. Thank you.
Should I email that to somebody?
Yes, please. To the board secretary?
Okay.
And we'll, we'll call it Graves objector photo. So that's, okay.
Can I, before we hit for the next speaker, either Jim or, or Derek, what, what is being done about Harry's Brook? And I know Harry's Brook is an ongoing problem, you know, in, in a number of areas in Princeton. But relative to Wee Chief, what is, is anything being done to minimize or in the extreme, eliminate the flooding on, on the street?
With all due respect, I don't think the board has the time to, to, for, for a full discussion on Harry's Brook and everything that's being done in order to mitigate the flooding. It's a very complex system. We are doing everything we can when we have development to minimize the runoff from those developments, bring them back to pre-development flows. There's a lot of flow from upstream that's getting down here into the Wee Chief Lane area. It, it's not something that has a simple solution.
Oh, no, no, I know, I know it's very complicated, but I guess, I guess what I'm getting to is the municipality is trying to deal with this whole flooding issue relative to Harry's Brook.
I, Deanna Stockton and I spent an hour with two, two of the neighbors from just up the way on Harriet Drive today, discussing the, the erosion of the embankment of Harry's Brook and what can be done. And it's, again, very complex situation.
It's an ongoing problem. It's an ongoing problem that the municipality is, is trying to deal with.
Trying to deal with it on every one of the tributaries to Harry's Brook.
Sure. Okay, thank you. All right, Eve.
So Mr. Con, there are a couple, at least, at least one person who has spoken before. Do we want to let, and I.
Well, let's, let's, did everybody, did everybody have a chance? Everybody wanted to have a chance to speak at least once?
I, if anybody who has not yet spoken.
I think we have Elizabeth Smith. She hasn't. We have Mr. Bobby Hackett.
Hi, I just want to enter one thing for the record.
Hold on, Mr. Hackett, we just need your address first.
Yep, that's fine. Yeah, it's Robert Hackett, fifty-six Wee Chief Lane.
And do you swear affirm your testimony will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
I just thought it'd be useful in the context to see a, a quick video of that same storm. So you can see the flood. This is, just to, just to get a sense of it, the Brook is here, meant to be here. And this, and I have a fairly steep backyard, so I'm actually, and now I'm looking over to Rebecca's house. There's her soccer goal. And you can see it creeping up to her backyard and then it gets worse as it goes farther down. And this is not, this is a little bit bigger than normal, but it's, we have pretty bad storms. I just thought it might be useful to see a live version.
Mr. Hackett, when did you take this video?
That was also.
July thirty.
Game date, July thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen.
All right, so we'll make that an exhibit. Would you send a copy of that to the board secretary, please?
Yeah, we'll do.
Put it in the record. Thank you.
Thank you for the video.
Okay. Are there others who have not yet spoken who would like?
I think Elizabeth Smith, did, did she not speak yet?
Not yet.
Ms. Smith, you're muted. Can you take, take it off mute?
Can you hear me now?
We can. And could you first give us your address?
I'm at, so I'm Elizabeth Smith and I live on thirty-two Wee Chief Lane.
And do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I'm not as eloquent as my neighbors, but I'll try to give some ideas. We've, we're one of the oldest people living on the street there. We've been there thirty-nine years now. And I have to say that every year is almost, you know, more of a problem than the year before. We've had so many floods, you know, in our basement that cost us a lot of money. And yet we not even on the level of the Brook, we above. But so basically, all flooding in our basement is probably mostly from the new construction built on Nassau Street and more coming as we know. And I also have to mention something that we all on Wee Chief have come to a front of you on the, you know, the board to beg you not to build these big two houses on the corner of the Snowden and Wee Chief because it was really going to destroy the whole feeling of coming to Wee Chief with kind of like, almost like a forest at the corner. And they promised us that it wouldn't be, that it, it wouldn't change the look, that they would kept, keep a lot of those trees and so forth. And it turns out that they could done almost every one of them, put, you know, these pine trees that look like maybe a Christmas tree farm for a while until they all die. And it damaged the look of our street. Now, I know this is not totally related to what we talked tonight, but I'm so afraid that every time we let you build something new, it changes the whole look of the street and it changes, obviously, the impact on our houses or basement. When, when we have heavy rain, the, the lower part of my yard becomes the Harris Brook. And we, we actually, we need to do something about it, that's for sure. So that's what I have to say. And that I was very disappointed that you really let us down with the look of the corner of Wee Chief and Snowden Lane. I don't know if everybody agrees with me, but.
Ms. Smith, this was something that came before this board or the planning board?
Planning board, that thing.
A planning board? Okay, all right. Gotcha. Okay.
Thank you for your.
Many of you weren't on the board at that time.
It's a different board. This is zoning board.
Right.
That was a subdivision, so that's why it went to the planning board.
Okay. Yes, I see Peter Burt. Is that, hang on one second, please. Eve, is that the next person on the list?
I, I don't have a list. There, there is someone though that is, I'm having difficulty promoting to panelists and I'm, I'm not sure why. Erlene, I don't know why I can't, just not, she's not.
Well, we have it, we appear to have Peter Burt, is that right? And he's on the screen. Maybe we can hear him and then try to get the other.
Mr. Burt, could you first give us your address, please?
It's eighty-eight zero Wee Chief Lane.
And do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention at eighty, eighty Wee Chief Lane, we have a much more severe flooding than we've seen in these videos. Those are dramatic videos, but at our house, which is at the end of Wee Chief, the water comes roaring down the, the stream. I'd say it gets five feet deep, but it goes into the yard and up to the house. So it's up against the foundation of the house. And that's been true. We've been here for thirty-eight years and it's been true. But it's a, it's a consideration that this type of flooding is only going to get worse in time. And we're in a precarious position, but there are going to be others that, that become more precarious. And the comment was made with respect to the current variance that it only adds, I think it was forty square feet of impervious surface. And I guess, I guess I, I would wonder whether that's over the zoning limit or in addition to what the current house has. But my concern would be that even small additions add up. And, and I don't know whether I mentioned it in our last storm, which was last November, we had water up to a quarter inch of our basement windows. Basement is developed. And so those are bedroom windows and it was a quarter inch. So it doesn't take too many small increases to go up another quarter inch. And over time, certainly, that's going to happen. So I I guess, even though these might be seem like insignificant additions, my concern will be they they can add up.
I I I agree with you. I mean, what appears to be, I'll use the term de minimis relative to one lot in quantity becomes a real problem. But again, okay, thank you for your comment. Do we have anyone else who hasn't spoken yet? Raise their hands.
Say again that Earlene, I I just, I don't, I don't know if Claudia, if you can do some, I don't know how to move her, but maybe.
It's actually on the panelist, but she's not.
There's an Earlene.
Yeah, she's not.
And she's muted.
Herself.
But she's muted and her video is off. If if she can call in or unmute, we can hear her.
Can I just say one thing?
There we go.
There we go.
I'm I'm just listening. I'm not a participant.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
All right.
Can I can I just say one thing, which is that the person who owned that property, it would flood all the way up to the back of her house. It's going to happen again. Mark, your daughter's going to have flooding again. And for undersized lots, one thing Princeton could consider is buying up these lots and just letting them become trees and riparian buffers and just leaving them. And so that has not been discussed. We don't have to build on every lot. So I I don't know why that's not an option. So.
Well, it's 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 very much an option, but it's not an option for the board.
I understand.
I mean, it's obviously it's an option for the neighbors if they would like to get together and and try to do that or bring it up to the town. But it's it's unfortunately not something we can deal with here. Okay, all right, so.
So.
Have we have we heard any everyone for the first time? And do to previous speakers want to talk again? And if they do, it's fine. Let's limit it to a couple of minutes. And if the comments were were basically voiced by someone else, basically, just if you could, just voice your support of that comment.
Sophie, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, Chairman Cohen, I just wanted to respond to your question about what the municipality is doing. And as a former Chair of the Environmental Commission, we have been working very hard on the stormwater issue. And one of the things we have done is to adopt the new element of the master plan. Very recently, the green building and environmental sustainability element, which, as I referenced earlier, does state the objective to reduce the town's level of impervious cover and to better manage stormwater when properties are being redeveloped. And I certainly agree with the comments made previously that what happens with one property isn't going to solve the problem. But I do think from what you've heard here this evening and the problems that these neighbors have been having, that to add any additional impervious cover in this neighborhood seems clearly to be a public detriment.
Well, again, I I can't disagree with you. I think what you and your board are doing are very commendable. We have an existing set of criteria that we have to judge this application against. And and I think we're going to try to do our best to to follow that guideline. Which is only fair to the applicant, quite frankly, and I think.
Absolutely, but I I would respect. I just would like to reference the town's master plan and the importance of considering that.
And I agree with you. I agree with you. But again, the ordinance is the ordinance. And I think at this point, the applicant is well aware of the the issues relative to flooding, and it's their decision how they want to deal with it. So thank you for your comment. Eve, do we have anyone else that wants to speak at this point?
Not that I can.
Oh, wait, I see Mr. Doherty would like to, Alex Doherty would like to say something.
Uh, yes, if if I may just touch on 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 a few points, I'll be brief. It's certainly important for the public to come out and stress their concerns. And as Miss Manner had stated before, I've learned about the removal of the trees through the neighbor to the right, Ms. Lily, who threw out the number at sixteen sixteen thirteen. And so I say that for the neighbor at sixty-two. It was not John McDonough's intent to try to mislead. I don't believe he was aware there was tree removals that took place. And from what it sounds like, there was a healthy bunch that were decayed, which the plan implements new planting. And as we heard upon conditions for additional planting. But I do want to, it seems, it seems to be a disconnect. The corner house on Snowden, the reason I I believe everyone is so opposed to that is because of the ordinance of the FAR. The larger your lot accumulation is, the larger that floor area could be. So I say that because this lot is substantially undersized of, you know, approximately half of what the zone it calls for. And with that said, we still meet the ratio of lands a building. So I say that because if this lot was conforming, the house as an as a right build could substantially be a lot larger. What's more reflective on Snowden. So I say that because the out price seems to be more aligned with what the zoning calls for for this particular neighborhood. It sounds the issues of the impervious coverage as well. This particular build out on this reduced size lot still meets the impervious coverage. So I say that because it sounds like the issue is more about rendering this particular parcel and into economic inutility, which is is not necessarily, I think, the case for the municipality, but it definitely seems to be concerned that the community has to work with the township about maybe massaging some of the ordinances that that apply to this particular neighborhood, maybe not the entire R R five zone. And I just wanted to point that out because the FAR, if this lot was a conforming sized lot, the house here, the footprint would be substantially larger. And there's really not much that could be done by any of the boards. In fact, a developer or homeowner could build without having to come in front of the board if there was no such variance. So I do want to keep that in mind for the residents of this neighborhood, because it sounds like there is a little bit of a disconnect. And I definitely wanted to shed some light on that. But as far as the impervious coverage goes, it's in compliance, the FAR is compliant. It may seem like it's a large house, but the zone calls for houses of this size, even though this neighborhood, the houses may be smaller Cape Cod. Um, new development, it it can come in and it can be larger. So if there's is an issue of the the water and the impervious coverage and what the residents believe the character is, maybe there should be more of a conversation about that particular neighborhood. It may have been an overlay zone or something of nature. And and like I said, I don't believe there was John's intent to miss mislead the resident sixty-two. I don't think he was aware that there was tree removal. And that's really what I have to say. Like I said, I do believe there is positive here. And if we can address some of the pressing issues being the flooding, I think there could be something there. But from a planning standpoint, I'm not an engineer. I can't come up with a any kind of resolution for the flooding that takes place at the, you know, this neighborhood. So with that being said, I'm just going to kind of leave it back to the public. And I just want to say as a planner, we we really like seeing the public come out and because we can't plan without, you know, the better intent for a community if if no one comes out. So this, I think this is a good form. However, you know, like I said, the FAR and the impervious coverage are in compliance. So these issues that are pressing their hood from a standing, a planning standpoint, you know, it's not much I can say as far as, you know, we're not making this issue worse. This is what the city allows.
Thank you.
Eve, may I?
Yes.
I just, I just have, because of the concerns about the flooding and the fact that there's no requirement for them to provide any stormwater management under our ordinances. I I will throw out there, there's nothing keeping them from doing that. And I would like to suggest that the applicant consider, since they are building, constructing a building with flat roofs, that they consider a green roof and possibly a rain garden in the front yard to mitigate some of the stormwater runoff from from the building. But as I said, we can't require them to do it under the ordinance, but perhaps they might consider that.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent idea. And Mr. Stropian, if I'm pronouncing your name correctly, it might be something you might want to consider. And and Mr. Finelli. So that's something that it's a very good suggestion. And and I would think that would help. Thank you.
Want to answer that? Mark, you want to answer that, please?
Close it to the microphone, please.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. So I'm more than willing to consider that. I don't know exactly what we're talking about. I don't know what means a green roof. The stormwater, if that is a is a rain field or something like that, that's actually what we built at the house where we live, where we are living now. So I'm familiar with that. So we did it here. If that is what it is, I'd like to understand it better, but I'm definitely willing to look into that.
I'm sure your engineer and your architect are are very familiar with these. So it's a good idea to talk with them about it. Yeah.
And Mr. Chair, if we have in the past required shaded down lighting, perhaps we could also require something like this, it seems to me, right?
No, I think Jim's suggestion is a good suggestion. It it would be something that that theoretically could be brought up to the council. And they could consider, you know, including that in 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 their list of requirements for the zone or for the specific area.
Right, but we've required things that weren't coming from council as we've tagged along on we have in the past.
No, I understand. I understand. It's a good point.
This, and this is a little more significant. Well, it depends on how you feel about, like, pollution. That's that's a bad thing, too.
Right. Okay. Any other audience comments, questions?
I wanted, I I've kind of lost track of the conversation in the beginning. Chairman Cohen, you were suggesting that the setback should be the side setback should be should be expanded to fifteen feet on each side. And I understand, right, conforming. My understanding was that the owner agreed to do that. And I'm curious if that is that, does that then become a requirement of the variance?
It would, if we put it, if we include it in the approval, it becomes a requirement.
And I guess I, if we're getting down to like ways to kind of mitigate this, then I I wonder if the carport could be reduced from two to one as has been done in the past with zoning variances on this street. The only house that has a two-car garage is the house that Mr. Doherty referred to a moment ago that is built on a half acre lot at the end of the street. Every other.
Is this a, is this a two-car carport or a single-car carport?
It's a two-car carport.
It is bare, it is barely a two-car carport. It's eighteen feet wide, eighteen feet deep.
Yeah, it's it's pretty snug.
Be that big?
It's pretty snug. It's pretty snug. And I I'm pretty sure I saw, you know, at least two of those photographs had double-wide overhead doors on on the house.
Only the one at the end of the street. Now no others have two-car garages.
It's it's a pretty snug space.
Well, it's it's, Mr. Finelli, if if you and the owner talk about that, it would be, it's it's probably logical or not logical, but it's probably not a bad idea to reduce it if you could. But that's.
I agree. Yeah, I agree. I think if we have, we have the FAR, the existing FAR regulations to work within, and we can read, and we can expand the side yards setbacks to meet fifteen feet, then yes, there's certainly going to be, you know, something has to give, obviously. So it it's it's certainly possible that the carport could be reduced.
Okay, thank you. Okay. More comments?
I'd like to just mention that the properties at the top of the street, Wee Chief and Snowden, we had those builders say, yes, we're going to do X, Y, Z with the property and never followed through on it. And I know some, Mark was saying that he would consider. I would really, I I really value this board and making it more than just a consideration for making those adjustments aside from the variance or the side lines, the side, what do you call that? The fifteen feet on the sides that he would commit to doing something that would actually be more sustainable, more environmental, more about stormwater remediation on the property.
Okay, valid. All right.
Can I just second that? Because, and again, this isn't fair to Mr. Shortbian or the folks who are here, because this is, this is something that happened a while back. And obviously, we're all still you know, frustrated by it, but they had agreed not to do a K-turn to reduce the impervious surface and get two K-turns up there. So I'm not sure.
No, I I missed that. Not to do what?
To build, the driveway has a K-turn, so it's more impervious surface, like you can like pull out and turn around and come out the front way. I don't know. I don't know the precise term for it, but it we had, I actually walked away from the last last round thinking, okay, at least we got rid of the K-turn. But there it is. So.
I think, look, I think we all agree. We all agree that we want to limit the impervious coverage on the lot. And I think, I think so what we can do is suggest to the owner and the engineer and the architect that they consider that. But they are working within an existing set of criteria, and they seem to have met that with the exception of the neighborhood. Neighborhood revitalization ordinance, the location of the garage. But it's not a garage, the carport. So I think we can make that suggestion and and hope they would take it to heart.
I guess so. It's impossible for the board to make that a requirement of granting the variance.
Okay.
I mean, this is, I'm asking the question.
I missed it. Go ahead. Would you say it again?
So I guess, I guess my question is whether, and again, this is comes from my not spending a lot of time in this Zoom room or the regular room, but is it possible for this board to make those those things requirements in order to grant the variance?
A good question. I don't know exactly what criteria we would use to require it.
Well, I think, Eve.
Go ahead.
We can do it because the carport regardless needs a variance. So if they build a less wide, you know, a narrower carport, it will still be subject to the variance because it's in front of the house. So, yes, of course, we can, we can do a condition that the variance on the carport will only be if the car carport and driveway are narrow.
Fine, that's a good point. Yes, and we could. Good point. Thank you, Michael. Thank you.
Good.
Sixty-two Wee Chief. Okay. Any any other comments from the neighbors or from the audience? Okay, so if we have none, we'll close the public portion.
I just have one.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I will not take up a lot more time. I'm just, is it one of the variances to be excused from the lot size requirement?
Well, I mean, it's they're building on an undersized lot.
Right. So that's a variance, right?
Well, it's it's a variance to build on an undersized lot. But you know, they, again, you know, they've tried to acquire other land, which they can't do, so they have no choice.
Right, no, I get it. I get it. I get it. I I but they have to get a variance to build on an undersized.
They have to get a variance to build on the lot.
Can a requirement of that be to shrink the square footage?
Mr. Mr. Satchin, you've heard a lot of comments about the size of the house. Is the applicant willing to do that? Before the board gets into the extent to which they can try to come up with a.
The FAR. What can I say? We're not we're not changing the FAR.
I can't hear you, Richard.
Can't hear you.
We're reducing the house by eliminating the they to make it fifteen-foot side yard. We're reducing the house. Okay, you understand?
Could you, could you like speak so that we can at least?
We can't, we can't hear you.
See your face. That would help.
We're reducing the house. Okay, because of the fifteen-foot side yard.
Are you redo, are you reducing the house? Will you be redo? Okay.
No, we're reducing the house.
Okay, no, you said, you said, that's okay, that's fine.
Finelli said we have to reduce the house to meet the fifteen-foot side yard. So.
Is that correct, Mr. Finelli?
No, you're right. I I want to, I want to clarify. Right, we are going to, we are going. No, you're right. I want to, I want to clarify. Right, we are going to, we are going to have 15-foot side yard setbacks. I would, personally, I would not commit to reducing the square footage. We have an FAR restriction. We are within the FAR restriction and, and we want to respectfully stay within the FAR restriction. And, and I've explained a couple of times how I think visually the impact of this building is far less than a smaller building with an attic. I honestly don't think that's debatable. So I'm just making the point that the style of the house does not and does not enhance the square footage. The style of the house visually reduces the amount of square footage. So I would not propose to reduce the available FAR. It, it may get smaller just because it has to once we reduce the 15 feet, but I would not commit to doing anything less than what the FAR currently allows.
Mr. Shatsman, what are you saying? Are you saying you will reduce it? Mr. Finelli's saying he may not reduce it.
Correct, I misunderstood. I misunderstood when I made that suggestion. So I go along with what Mr. Finelli's, not an architect like you or Mr. Finelli, but I got confused when he said he's going to reduce the, he's going to take the house and we're going to make it 15 foot. I thought, by my own view, that you would have to reduce the size of the house, but what he's saying is, no, you don't have to do that. But we are, we will comply with the 15-foot side yards on each side, both the left and the right.
The, if the carport is reduced to one car, what kind of reduction in square footage would that reflect?
So we, I mean, I can, I can work that out, but I think, you know, before, before I would say, you know, one car, just like any other residential garage, right? That garage has cars, bicycles, recycling, things like that. So effectively, one car space nominally would be 12 by 18. I don't think I would want to reduce it any less than, I'll say 16 in width, but you know, anywhere from 14 to 16 feet in width gives me a legitimate one-car protected space and then just some space to keep, you know, bicycles and things out of the rain. So I would, I don't know the exact number until we design it, but if I say between 14 and not to a C16, I think I'm comfortable there. And that's a, at least in terms of the square footage of that, that's a, anywhere from a 32 to a 64-square-foot reduction.
It's clearly not a two-car carport anymore.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments from the-
I just want, I, I'm going to be annoying now. Sorry, Chairman Cohen, but, so I just want to be very clear. So the board is going to not exercise its authority to require a reduction in square footage.
We have not said that.
Okay, okay.
Said it. We're discussing this now and the board hasn't spoken and no motions have been made.
Okay, great. Well, then perhaps at this point, if everybody in the public has spoken, then perhaps public comment can be closed and the board will now go into executive session where they can now have-
That's what I was going to suggest.
Okay, very good.
So we're going to close the public portion at this point. Before we go into executive session, Mr. Shatsman, do you want to make any closing remarks?
You're muted, Rich.
You're-
Gone over the issues. As Mr. Purcell says, you know, it's really, we're complying, and Mr. Schmidt says, which Mr. Purcell agrees, as far as the flooding is concerned, we're complying with the DEP regulations. And Ms. Casey could tell you on their case called Stockholm versus Edison, and she said that they have exclusive jurisdiction over floodplains, streams, et cetera. Well, we will take other advisement, the green roof and the rain garden in the front, the rain garden, the back won't do anything for you, that much I do know. And as far as the size of the house is concerned, we, we're under the FAR that's required by the town. And the house now is truly, and we will reduce the carport as asked for by Mr., discussed by Mr. Finelli. The house by now having redesigned for 15-foot setbacks on either side leaves you with lot frontage, lot width, and lot size, which cannot be remedied. It's a true C1 hardship. And that's, that's my summation. After all the discussion, which were, which were good discussions, I might say, but that's, I think, a true summary of what this application is now being considered for the board, by the board. That's all.
Okay. Okay, so basically, with the exception of, we'll call it the routine setbacks related to building on an undersized lot, the, the other variance is the parking or the garage, the carport visible from the street. So we're not, we're going to, we're going to, that is a variance and we'll deal with that.
Also height to setback ratio, right? They need variances for that. Correct?
They do, but we don't know what they'll be when they reduce the side yard setbacks to-
Right, exactly.
The side yard. I don't know.
I guess they'd have to come back and present that, don't they, then? If you don't know whether, I mean, we don't know then if it's needed or not. So wouldn't the applicant have to come back?
Well, it, it will exceed one to one. We're only talking, we're talking about a three-foot expansion of the, from 12 to 15. It was 1.5 to one and it was 1.4, one to one. The extra three feet is not going to get us the one to one in either case.
No, I understand, but what my point is simply that I don't think the board can simply say the variance is whatever it's going to be.
No, I think we're going to have, I think they're going to have to come back in and present the revised house to us. Derek, what do you think?
Unless he can calculate it now, but I don't, I don't think you can see it off of that diagram.
But if you want to give me a minute, that's about all it will take. If you're okay with that, then just give me one minute.
I'm okay with giving a minute. We're at five at this point.
All right, thank you.
Michael, did you want to say anything? I noticed you motioned.
Um, I guess I, I thought they had to come back, but if he can, the architect, Mr. Finelli, can do it, fine. I'm assuming he's, since he's not, he talked about the farm may not change. I guess that means he's building a little more house on the second floor. So we'll see what is, what's going to happen. If that's the case, then the, we'll see. And it looks like if you reduce the setback and you're just increasing the second floor a little bit to keep the same FAR or not go over, then you're going to reduce even the impervious coverage just by reducing this, increasing the setback. So we'll see what we see.
I would, although, although I'd rather not put the, the applicant under pressure to come back to us, it may be, may be appropriate, given the number of changes we're going to make here.
Yeah.
What do you think?
I agree with you. I was the applicant. I wouldn't make the decision.
I, I think, I think we're going to have-
But if the applicant wants to do it, fine.
Yeah, I think it's going to, I think it's going to have to come back so we can see exactly what the house is.
Yeah, I have to rely on, I have to rely on the architect for that.
Yeah.
I just had one question for Jim Purcell. I'm not sure if he can answer it. We've heard that there's now a new element of the master plan with respect to stormwater management. Does it have any standards in it or what, what, do you know what it says, this new element of the master plan?
They are, they're general, general goals. And it's not that new. It's not as if we just passed it this year. It's 2019, I think. But no, they're general principles. They're not, they're not standards. Our, our stormwater management ordinances have those standards in them. And the, just so everyone knows, the, there is no requirement to provide stormwater management on single-family homes unless you're increasing the impervious surface by more than 400 square feet. This one was only 40 square feet. So there was no requirement.
Thank you.
You know, Steve, just, just to give a second opinion here, I'm, I'm not as concerned about the side yard setback.
Okay.
I mean, you asked earlier, I should have spoken up and said I wasn't as concerned about it, but I'm not sure why we're nibbling around the edges here when we're really not doing, you know, if we're going to improve the project. It seems like a fairly well-designed project for now. Why do we want to change that? And just kind of use a little scissors to cut around the edges of it.
Well, we, on new construction on an undersized lot, we ask people to conform to the, the building envelope. And, and I don't see any reason why this couldn't. That's why I brought it up.
But I, I agree with, you know, I'm not, I, last thing I want to do is argue this point because I don't feel strongly about it, but they're reducing from what's the existing is. Right? So they're not, if they were, if they were building to the envelope, they'd be able to maintain what the, what the building has now.
But there's no, there's no reason on a new house that, that you would need to-
But, but we do allow people to build on the, on the same footprint.
Well, it's, I, I'm concerned about it. I, I respect the fact that you're not, so.
I'm not as concerned, I guess.
Not as concerned, okay.
I can give you those numbers if you'd like them. So where we had a 1.5 to one ratio, we will have a 1.24 to one ratio. And where we had a 1.41 to one ratio, we will have a 1.22 to one ratio.
Okay. What is the, what's the pleasure of the board with regard to having the applicant come back in with a revised house?
May I ask a question about the carport setback?
Speak a little louder, please, Tom.
Carport setback. Mr. Finelli, if the carport is reduced, do you still need a variance for the setback for the carport?
Yeah, I think we need the variance for the carport because it's in the front yard, not, not because of its proximity to the side yard.
So even if you reduce the size of the carport because of its location?
Correct. I think the ordinance calls for the front of the, front wall of the carport a certain distance away from the front wall of the house and that's, that's where our variance lies.
Thanks.
Ralph, can, Ralph, this is Mark. Can I ask you a question just from my own understanding? The, am I correct to think that there is no real alternative to the carport other than basically you park your car on the street?
So, no, that you would, you would still park on your property. There are a number of, there are a few houses that don't have garages and going up and down the street, you'll see people, you know, parking sort of on the grass almost. So you don't have to have a carport. You could functionally, you know, you're just going to pull your driveway in and park in front of the house. But, but the, the carport, there are two issues with the carport. From the neighbor's perspective, they feel it's too large. From, from your perspective, you need something to protect the car. And on the flip side of that, the carport does count toward the FAR. So that's something that we're, you know, that if we reduce the size of the carport, you could look at it one of two ways. I'm going to reduce the FAR or I'm going to put more habitable space in the building. I mean, that's right.
All right, thank you. Okay, so I guess we want to decide if, if we want the revised home to come back before us. Anyone?
Well, I, I, not to put it on Karen, but I defer to the attorney.
Okay.
If, if from a legal, if from-
Are you, are you asking me if legally you can do that? Yes, you can. It's a matter, I mean, the question is, you ask applicants to give you drawings of their home so that you and the neighbors can get an understanding of what is proposed. Now changes are going to be made. I think you can ask them to come back and show you those changes. If you don't want to do that, that is within your discretion. Then you won't see it and, you know, we, we would have to try and describe as carefully as we could what's being changed, what variances are being approved. So if the question is, can you do it? Yes, you can.
I'm very uncomfortable doing that. I, I would want to see it again before we approve it.
I agree.
I agree too, because eventually Derek will have to enforce whatever is clear or unclear and seeing drawings would be better.
So what are we going to ask the applicant? Would you, would we, would they ask us for continuance?
Sure.
Well, it would have to be carried now to, Derek would have to either come up with a meeting date or the applicant would need to renotice. If we announce today when it's being-
I'll agree to that with a, with a new meeting day.
Say that again, Richard?
We can't understand you. Can you please speak into the microphone?
I will agree to-
Please speak into the microphone. We cannot hear you. We cannot understand you.
I will agree to, I will agree to continue, but give us a date certain. I don't want to renotice.
Okay. Do we have a date certain, Derek?
I mean, the next meeting is June 23rd. That's very short notice. And after that, it would be July 28th.
So what is the submission deadline for documents for June 23rd?
Isn't that too, I mean, Derek, it's normally 10 days before. They couldn't meet that anyway, so.
It'd have to be July.
I need something two weeks before the meeting, just to review it.
Okay, yeah. So July 28th means July 14th submission deadline?
Yes.
Practically speaking, July 14th.
Yep.
Is that an acceptable date, Mr. Shatsman, Mr. Finelli?
It's okay with me.
Okay, with me.
Okay.
Ralph, Ralph, can I ask you a question? The, is it? I think it is, but I just want to know, is it clear for you? Is it clear for you, Ralph? What parameters we have to work within?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, I, I mean, I'll recap, I'll recap for you, but my understanding from the board, we have agreed to conform to the 15-foot side yard setbacks. We have expressed our preference not to reduce the required, the FAR requirement. We have agreed to reduce the size of the carport. Those are the parameters. As far as the drawings that the board will see, we'll study the green roof and, and you and I will discuss that and we'll discuss it with Dave and Richard. The building will not effectively look different necessarily with or without it from the architectural drawings. You might have a little different parapet, let's say, but effectively the building will not look different. So that's something that we can, we can continue to work on and, and determine at a later date.
And you also talked about possibly the rain garden in the front yard?
Yes. Well, that's, that's Dave's-
You'll study that. You'll study that. You'll study that. You'll study that, yeah. Okay. Okay.
You want to make.
Anything else?
You want to make an announcement that it's continued to Ju- July twenty-eighth without further notice?
That's correct.
Karen?
That the application is going to be carried to July twenty-eight. The applicant will not be renoticing. So if anybody's interested in seeing what is submitted by the applicant. It should be posted on the website and if you check with staff, they'll also be able to confirm what they have. And I think now. Since the building is open, people can come in and see the plans. Is that correct, Eric, if they want to?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that, that's another option now that people have in addition to trying to look at it online. They can come in in person and take a look.
Okay.
Just a, a simple question. By July twenty-eighth, are we still zooming or are we in person?
We don't know yet. Right now we're zooming, I guess, right?
Yeah, I would say we're zooming.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much and we'll see you in a month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Chairman Cohen, can we take a five-minute break?
We can. It is. What is it, ten oh eight? So will we convene at ten thirteen?
Mr. Tychowski, is there anyone? From your group that I should be, that's missing as far as you can tell? On the screen.
No.
We're here. Our four are here.
There we are. We're, that's four of us, yep.
Very good. Thanks.
Okay. Okay, it's ten thirteen, I think. We're back and our next hearing is one seventy-six Edgerstone. Lot ninety-three oh three, lot one in the R two zone.
If it pleased the chair, unfortunately.
It was all in order. I guess we went through that the last time, so we're good.
Steve, I'm unfortunately after recuse myself from this case.
Okay. No problem.
And Jim, you're recusing yourself as well, right?
Yes, I am.
Gotcha, okay.
To accuse.
How many, excuse me, just a quick one. How many people do we have then? We have.
Five.
To hear this.
Five. Five.
Five.
And it needs, it needs what's called the D variance, which the board is familiar with because it's, the use is not permitted. So it will need five votes. We got five people. It needs five votes. Ordinarily, the applicant.
Mr. Goldman, do you want to proceed?
Like he's shaking his head, no.
I, I, I don't, but my question is, will there ever be a time when there are more than five if two. Folks have recused themselves?
If we have, we have two board members absent now. They're both alternates. But if they, if they attend, then it would be one, two, three.
We have seven.
Yeah, we would have seven men, so we could if, if, if they're both able to be in attendance.
And, and does this, would this push us then also to that July twenty-eighth meeting?
I mean, I suggest that we. Schedule you for the upcoming June twenty-third meeting. We'll check if you have a quorum. If we have a quorum, you can carry it to that case. If we don't, then. You could ask for, sorry with Karen, you could ask for a continuation to the next July. We'll ask if we have quorums for the June and July meetings. And you, if it's.
Right, but in, in this case, we would be a quorum with a, yes, you're right, a quorum. That's correct.
Karen, the reason why, why I'm recusing myself is my son is going to be attending the school. I just thought that was appropriate. Is that?
And you, and you're right, and I did try to respond to you, but I don't know why it's not going through, but you, I think you're correct about that. I think that recusing yourself would be appropriate, so.
Yeah, and I, I live two down, two doors down from the property, so and I have friends that live across the street. So it's just a little bit, doesn't seem to be fair.
So you were noticed.
Yeah.
Oh, well, then definitely, that, that's not optional then if you were noticed, so.
So.
Well, maybe three times will be the charm. This is number two, but I, I think as Karen knows, trying to do a D variance, requiring five votes with only five in attendance is. Really not fair to the applicant.
Yeah, this, this, this is information we learned tonight. Otherwise, we would have shared that with you sooner, so.
Yeah.
All right, so we're announcing it's being carried to the board's regular June twenty-third meeting. So you will not be renoticing. And if there's anybody out in the audience who's interested. Please attend via Zoom on June twenty-third.
Okay. Oh, wow. Maybe, maybe if we keep carrying it, the temporary leave will be over by the. So I'm glad I'm at least able to give you a little earlier night tonight than you were anticipating. I appreciate it. Thank, thank you very much.
That was like a.
Sorry for the inconvenience.
No, it's all right. It's all right. Thank you.
Are we done, Steve?
I believe so.
Was there, were we gonna have some discussion about whether we were gonna go live soon or?
Well, I mean, that's at a level higher than us.
Okay.
I'm gonna start the discussion. You know, with the administration here and we'll see where it goes. I'll, I will keep the board advised, the price of the situation, so.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn. Okay.
Good night.
Yes, adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye. Bye bye.
See you, Steve.
Okay.
Good night. I'm trying to find the leave button. Good night.
Good night, everybody.